Right now, we'll get started here in just a second. Thomas, you guys gonna have it on? There we go. There it is.
Always mayor with council. They always get broadcasted.
Very good. All right, council, welcome to and in public, welcome to the special meeting of the Federal Way City Council for November 4th, 2020. Obviously, we are via Zoom, a remote meeting pursuant to the governor's orders. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Let's allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. The United States of America.
States of America.
And to the Republic.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
Which it stands.
Just stand.
One nation.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay. We'll get the hang of it. We've had a lot of practice. Okay, welcome, everybody. Okay, we are here. We have two purposes for our special meeting. Number one is for continued city council deliberations for the 2021 to 2022. Biennial but biennial budget. Then we'll have public comment. And then after that, we as our regular city council meeting starts at 6:30. We'll need up to half hour for our city council meeting. We want to build in five minutes to get in and out of our meetings electronically and give ourselves a few minutes. So at 5:45, we should break to be able to go into executive session and build in those transitions. With that, let me turn on the. It's important for me to stop talking and for you guys to start talking. With that, Council President Honda, you were recognized.
Thank you very much. So. Tonight's an important meeting. It's one of our last meetings that we have scheduled for the budget. And as such, I have some things I'd like to bring up. One, I'd like to know, this is an EJ question of the $250,000 that he had allocated for 2021 for this study on the maintenance yard. How much of the 250 will he need in 21, since we had already allocated 250,000? A few months ago. So I'd like to know how much he would need from that in 2021. I'd also like to talk about the graffiti person and why we need that position.
Okay, great. We'll have we'll have Brian talk about that. I would let you know that every Monday at 10 a.m. we have a standing item on the on the management team agenda in which I am emailed a report when we were meeting in person. I would receive a in-person copy of all of the graffiti that are graffiti people graffiti techs had come across and usually it's several pages, like two, three, sometimes four pages, double double columned of all the locations of the graffiti that we pick up or that we address around town. We have an approach which is to address graffiti within 24 hours. And we've been very excited that something that's very much a priority at the office. So we'll get your report by Brian. But first, let's go in order. EJ, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
All right. Would you please talk about the $250,000 and its its planned use for 2021?
Sure. So Council President, I think I hear you asking for a breakdown of what's 2020 versus what's 2021? Is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So they've started working. I do not have a the the contract value is $247,000. I do not have a exact answer of how much they're going to be able to do through December versus January. The task outline for them is to have a report in a condition that can preliminarily be presented to council in February. So just looking at that, now I will tell you, the the workload is not, even though that the time is basically 50/50 between 20 and 21, more of the work is getting done in 2021 in that time period. So it's not split the fee in half. But we do not have an exact amount of this will be 20, this will be 21. But roughly, I would expect it to be somewhere between 50 and $70,000 in 2020 and the balance in 20 and 20 in 2021. Sorry, it's a lot of the same number right there. But like we've talked about before, this is all the same contract and the same money. This is a and I know you, you're very well versed in the so I guess this is probably more frankly, a comment for the public than it is for you, Council President. But this is, it's it's one contract that spans biennium. So this is a little bit more of a budgeting exercise than moving, you know, necessarily saying that there's money. It's not doubling the money, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. It's $250,000 that's available for this task. It's just the way the timing falls. That is the reason it's showing up in both budgets, but the expenditure will be the total, not doubled.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Oh, now, Brian Davis for graffiti. Brian? And could you talk about the graffiti abatement team and how many people you have right now, where this will take you with the addition that's planned for the budget and why we need it? Brian? Brian Davis on here?
Okay, well, we can come back to that.
But I'll have my guy go make sure, go check on Brian real quick.
So I have a couple other questions. But before I continue, I want to ask tomorrow during the I mean, actually. Well, we have, we will have more time to talk about the budget at the next council meeting, right?
You should. One second.
Okay, so.
On one second.
Because I feel like we only have like 40 minutes, 30 minutes left, so.
One sec. Run today and then. We don't have anything scheduled for next week. And then the following week is the 17th. And we do have, we don't have a pre-meeting. I don't see a pre-meeting on the 17th at the next city council meeting, but it will certainly be on the budget. I mean, excuse me, they'll certainly be on the calendar. And the, yeah.
I just want to make sure we have more time because we're not going to get through this tonight. So. So I would like to talk about the positions that we brought up last time, the clerk position, economic development, inclusion and diversity. The planner, IT staff, consultant for the long-range planning and lobbyist for Washington DC. And would like to suggest that instead of hiring these people as employees and as city staff, that we hire these people as consultants and that we prioritize which are the most important to us as a council and work with a day to see what we can do to hire these folks as consultants. That way, they are not, we're not responsible for their benefits and all those other extras. I'd also like to suggest that departments. Well, actually, I'm going to let Hong talk about that. And I have more to say, but I'm sure other people have a lot to say too. So I will stop now and let other people talk. Thank you. Oh, Brian is here.
That's right. Brian? Brian, the question related to the graffiti tech position and the question that we want that I want you to ask that's been asked of you and ask you to relate to the council. How many would this take us in our graffiti? I explained that we have this on a weekly item that this is a high priority of ours. Can you tell us where this will take us with the graffiti personnel and why it's necessary?
Sure, happy to. So traditionally, we've always had two people on the job. In the past, that job has not been a full 40 hours a week. But the job is 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 needed by two people. And so we had one graffiti tech get promoted to another position of the city. And so that left that one vacant, leaving the other one to do it on his own. And it's been very difficult to do so. So he's been doing it full time and that has indicated to us that it is a position that is that needs to be two people at full time to complete the work. Especially with the increase in activity we're seeing, both in terms of graffiti and shopping carts. So it's, as I mentioned before, I don't know if I would necessarily call it an additional staff. It's additional hours for the two positions. So on the on the employee FTE sheet that's in the budget, it does look like we're adding a a full-time equivalent. But I would I would more frame it in the terms of that we have two employees and they're they're both getting additional hours to accomplish the job.
Why do you need two of them to do the work?
I didn't know. I didn't know I was muted. Thank you.
Brian, let's talk about this real quick. Why why two people to do the job?
Particularly with shopping carts, it's there's a lot of loading. There's a lot of documenting where we get the shopping carts from retrieval, you know, if the stores want to buy them back. It just is very difficult process-wise and inefficient for one person to do the job. So one person could do it. It's just not very efficient. And it would and frankly, there's more work than one person can do. So not only would it be inefficient, but it would be overwhelming for one person to do.
Is there a personal safety issue at all?
There potentially could be, and we have run into that issue before.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. And then Councilmember Tran, did we have a follow-up that you were gonna you were gonna follow up on this?
Well, thank you. Thank you for putting me right on the spot. Just kidding. Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. I like how the mayor framed this question at the last meeting, so I'll try my best. This question actually for a day in regard to the proposed pay increase for non-union staff. So let's say if we, how much would it cost us if we only give say 1% or 1.5%? And what is the potential saving?
It's $80,000 per percentage. It's it's $240,000 for three points, for three percentage points. So it's $80,000 per full point. So a point and a half would be $120,000. But let's make sure that that's correct. That's my understanding. A day is that is that correct or incorrect?
Yes, that is correct.
So just thinking in terms of $80,000 increments.
Okay, great. The other question I I would like to ask is earlier today, I sent an email to a day and asked for the cost estimate of the take-home car program for our officers. And I was really surprised that we do not track the 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 financial impact with this program. So I I would like to know, I hope you understand this. I mean, if we are gonna implement something, some program that clearly will have a financial impact on our budget. Why didn't we do the cost benefit analysis before we implement this program?
We have, we have. Counsel, a day you go first and we'll have the chief.
I just to be clear, remember the car that the officers are driving to do their job is also the car that they are driving home. So for me to say, even for anybody to be able to say, unless you're gonna say, when they finish their walk, you take their speedometer and check what you drive home. I think to be able to calculate the exact amount of what it will cost, we can calculate the new more, the new cars that we're adding. But to truly calculate the cost of them driving the car home or after work, I think.
Oh, I think I think that was a material misunderstanding. We of course track the new cars. And so and individuals are taxed based on their personal uses or usage of the car based on the the distance from from city hall to their to their home and the number of trips that they make. So that calculation has to be done for purposes of IRS filings by the individual.
No, sir, because they are security officers. For security officer, there's nothing considered personal, unlike we do for you. You know, for both police officers and firefighters, when they issued an official car, no, it is not considered personal.
Okay, Chief?
Okay, maybe I can explain. I'm not so sure Councilmember Tran understands what this take-home car program is. I'll just start macro. Our vehicles in the police department have a seven-year vehicle rotation. In the past, it used to be five, but because vehicles are made better and some of our vehicles are taken home now, we made made that change several years ago to make it a seven-year vehicle replacement. So we collect vehicle replacement on a seven-year basis. By contract, you know, some of our lieutenants take their vehicles home. It's in their contract agreement. Some officers take home if you live in the city or in the PA area, so they get a take-home car. So for example, in patrol, we have like 72 cars or so and 27 of them or so are taken home. So this program that it's nothing new. We've been doing it for, you know, 25 years or so. And some of it's by contract. And we have about a $425,000 supply budget within the police department. That pays for fuel, you know, maintenance of the vehicles, uniforms, everything. So there's very little money. And over the years, as we increased officers because of the Great Recession, everything else, we never really increased our supply budget. In fact, training budget was reduced from 102 to $81,000. So we've been we've been trimming as much as we possibly can. Unfortunately for us, fuel cost is about $40,000 a year, but you know, fuel cost has been pretty low in recent years. Because some of these vehicles are taken home, that's why we can put them on a seven-year vehicle replacement because otherwise we may need to be on five if no vehicles were taken home. Plus, there's efficiency within the police organization. If we have a shooting homicide, what you don't want is officers or SWAT members coming to the station to grab a vehicle to go when every minute matters sometimes. So it's not efficient. So some specialty people should have take-home cars. Our commanders should have take-home cars because we work 24/7. Something happens middle of night. Many of you don't know how often we're up middle of night or how often we're coming in, but we have to provide leadership to our people that are working nights. That's when we have the least amount of leadership out there. So sometimes command level, even deputy chief, even myself will respond to calls. So we we need to be efficient, have take-home cars. So there is no, if you say take-home car program, it isn't that the policy grabbed in know, we've been doing this for 25 years.
That's our train. Any follow-up?
Yeah, I was just concerned that for the amount of the cars that have to be driven home, the wear and tear, the gas, the insurance. What if, you know, something happened to the officer if they get involved into the accident? Who is gonna file the claim on that? You know, all those things I just, you know, I just need to to know more.
Okay. All right, maybe what we can do is, Chief, can you maybe tomorrow give Councilmember Tran a phone call? And if information comes out you want to share with the rest of the council, we can do that. Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. Yeah, let's let's please make sure that contact occurs. I know you will. Councilmember Coach Mar and Councilmember Dawson. Asefa Dawson, excuse me. Councilmember Coach Mar.
Thank you very much, Mayor. In the interest of time, I just, can you hear me? I can't hear myself. I'm not sure in my head.
Yes.
The Deputy Mayor, I mean, excuse me, Council President talked about several things. And then so in the interest of time, I just want to consolidate some ideas. The first idea we have to know is where we can find some money for some of the things we would like to do. Now, maybe we don't need to find the money. Maybe we just tell the mayor to find the money and and we put it on your shoulders, Jim, sorry. But, you know, rather than reduce people's salary increases, I'm wondering if we couldn't look at, and I think Councilmember Honda, I mean, President Honda brought this up about perhaps going across the board with a reduction in supplies. A percentage reduction of supplies across the board. I'm not sure whether that would provide any money or extra money, but that is one idea. But here's the thing. Here's the different positions that she's brought up, and I think that we need to consolidate our ideas for the things that we feel that we want the most. One is the diversity and inclusion coordinator, which certainly could be someone outside the organization, a consultant. The other was IT staff. I'm not sure how that would work. That would have to be on staff. We need to have there. It appears that many of us are interested in having some kind of a planner and/or a consultant planner for to update our comprehensive plan for the downtown only. So without knowing how much each of those would cost, it's hard, or even if the money's available. But I think if we just kind of consolidate the things we're looking for that we think are really important, one, two, or three, and then just say, hey, Jim, find the money, and if you can. The one thing that's that is important to me that I think we should seriously look at. Of course, the planner or the consultant, a lobbyist, because I think right now with talk about the stimulus package, I know that we will be getting money, but I think that we should have a consultant that could help guide us in that so that we get our fair share, because I know that there are many cities who get more than their fair share because they have a lobbyist in DC. And I think that we should at least explore that. I mean, I'm not saying do it. I just think that we should talk about it. Okay, and the other thing, one of the other things I do want to bring up. So I think we need to take those positions and then talk about which ones we want the most. And then we need to talk about, you know, the graffiti person. That is perhaps, somebody just reminded me that that was funded by Proposition 1. Part of the graffiti person was supposed to be funded by Proposition 1. Now, I don't know if that money is available, but I do know that Judge Rachen has talked in the past about using his diversion program to have the people who are in court to have them do our community cleanup rather than being sent into Seattle or King County to do community cleanup. So I mean, those are ideas on the table. For me, and I'll stop, for me, the most important things to me are the planner of some sort and the lobbyist that that would for now. I'm sure that the diversity person is important, but those are the things that I think we need right now. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see here. Councilmember Lydia Asefa Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all who have expressed your concerns or issues. And in response to Council President Honda, I think your suggestion is good around about getting consultants, but I don't think all of those positions could could use, some of them I think have to be employees. But I think that's a great idea, especially for the the one we're looking for for the diversity, race and inclusion position. And just like Councilmember Coach Mar suggested that, you know, the lobbyist position is very important to her. I'm going to continue suggesting that the diversity, race equity and diversity position is very important to me and possibly to other council members, and I and it's very important to the city as well. So thank you for that opportunity. My question is, and I have two questions. One is, when we talk about non-departmental budget, I think I need to better understand it in terms of how it coincides or correlates with other departments or if it feeds into other departments. And within that, there's page C59. We have supplies and I'm assuming it's COVID-related, but I just wanted to clarify that where we have from $1,000 adopted for 2,000 to 101,000. So I'm gonna just throw that and say that's COVID-related?
Let's ask. Aday?
Okay.
C59. And then Brian Davis, I'm gonna have a question for you in regard to the cost of the consultant for the planning position downtown.
Okay, for C59, which is non-departmental.
Yeah.
That is where we keep track as listed in there. Actually, if you look, the major part of it is our debt service. So when we are paying for the bonds, either for the Dumas Bay or community center, it doesn't come out of anybody's particular budget. It's coming out of this non-departmental. You have the the supplies, as I say, 99,000. Yes, you're right, which is due to COVID-19 supplies because of what we're trying to buy up. Also, you have into service. We try not to put some of this into services into individual department because they don't have control over it. What you want to put into individual department director's control are the things that they can now they can control. If they cannot control it, it doesn't necessarily, you cannot make them accountable for things that they cannot control. So that is why most of the items that we have in non-departmental are there instead of individual departments.
Okay, thank you.
You also have, you also have the other financing uses. And that is either when we're transferring fund, again, transferring fund to another department from the general fund is not necessarily an expense of general fund. We're giving it to another department or another fund. That is why all of those are accounted for in the non-departmental.
Okay, thank you. And then page C60. And I know Councilmember Berusso also asked about this, but I just wanted it to for you to answer that here is the paths and trails, the 200,000.
Yep.
If you could just share that with us. And thank you, Council Berusso, for asking that.
Path and trail, as I explained in my email, that is actually especially a dedicated fund that is intended to be used only for non-mortarable path. So even if you were to put a sidewalk beside a street, you cannot use this fund for it. So it's intended to be like if you're having a park and you're gonna put a trail there, it's supposed to be non-mortarable fund. And we went through this, I think, about two years ago. And for the benefit of the new council members, we went through about separate different buckets. This is one of those separate buckets. As we have a point 05 taxes that is accounted for in here, and it can only be used for that. The same thing goes for like REIT money. This money that is dedicated for that, it can only be used for that. The same thing for the one that REIT and these are designed by the state. Like Prop 1 is designed by the citizens of federal way. Say, well, you can levy this much on us for you to spend on this. So that is why you have a separate fund for that. And again, like utility tax to make sure, yes, we can use the the 6%, we can use it wherever we want. But again, it's accounted for separately. There are some that are designed by the by the city. If it is designed by the city, the city can decide to use wherever it wants. But if it's designed by the state or by the law of the citizens, no, we cannot do whatever it is that we want with it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I do want to note that I counsel I just sent you. Okay, I do want to note that I, Council, I just sent you an email, thanks to our new council member, Leandra Craft. Uh thank you, uh Leandra, uh for sending me that email that was from Brian Davis. Um and so um uh you should have that email, but uh uh and Brian, I didn't include you on that, uh but uh you want to just uh tell people what this email was about, about the two hundred thousand dollars and that cost benefits um uh for either going employee versus contractor. They all have your email, by the way.
Okay, great. So the um the, the goal behind this funding, as I understand, is to get a, a new vision or plan for downtown and the options are hiring an associate planner or bringing someone on board to do so. Associate planner, uh the cost over the course of two years is about, is just under two hundred thousand. The cost to bring on a, a, you know, reputable firm that does this on a, on a professional level is about the same. It might be a little bit lower, maybe two fifty is more appropriate, but two hundred is a number that I, I think you could use um for bringing someone on board to get the project done and then um have a, have a new plan in place. It's the, so you're spending the same amount of money for an associate planner, which is basically just a college graduate for two years or a professional for twelve to eighteen months to do the, the work that you want done.
A limited, you know, sort of real laser beam on, on those issues.
Right.
Okay. Okay, uh Council, any questions? Well, actually, uh you know, we're, we're operating on, on limited time here, so let's get through this. Um okay, uh Councilmember Asefa Dawson, uh did we go through all your questions? Okay, great. Councilmember Berusso, you're next. And then Councilmember Tran again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd um, thank you, Council President Honda, for the uh, the talk on the consultants. But I know that I've talked to a lot of folks and even you, Mayor, about the, I don't know if a if a consultant for the uh Equity Office would be a good thing because it'd be, to me, it's more of an ongoing type of thing uh to keep going. I don't want a consultant come in here, uh do one job or a year or so and then be out. Um so I'm kind of looking for still, that's a priority on my list. Um and I know that we all have priorities. Um we do need lobbyists, I believe it, uh with customer Coach Mar, that's a good one too. We just have to find the money to that. So my other question is to follow with on what Chief Wong was talking about. On the cars themselves, I know there's a seven year, you ever have seven year replacement plan? So I was wondering, could we extend some of that to one year out or eight years? To save some money at all.
Chief?
Um I, I wouldn't recommend it. I mean, this is a safety equipment for officers. These aren't just uh civilian driven vehicles. These have to go in pursuits. And sometimes you're exceeding hundred miles an hour, so I think safety of our people is critical. Now, if these vehicles are driven, some departments, the cars never stop running. They just run three shifts, twenty four seven, and then they're on a three year replacement cycle. So it all depends how often they're being driven. That's what I was saying, there's art of um when you have less people driving it, sometimes even after seven years, the vehicle's still in good shape. If it's driven by a person versus twenty four seven. You know, these, these cars are designed to go twenty four seven without ever stopping. But in that case, the mileage and wear and tear, at some point, the maintenance costs is so high that you've got to get rid of the vehicle because it's draining you. So I would tell you that we did have a five year vehicle replacement. Because we did some of this art of some of the vehicles going home and so forth, we made it seven years to be reasonable with the city budget. Um but I would not recommend it at this point because I feel like we've been going five for so many years and then we went to seven because vehicles are better too, and they're not, most of our vehicles are not driven twenty four seven. So we went with a seven year, so at, at this point, I would have to say no. I, I think, I think some cars we can, uh maybe, that, that'd be a good way of looking at it. Maybe uh detective cars or something like that, we, we could explore that. But I just want you to know, we went like across the board, went from five year vehicle replacement to seven year.
Right. No, thanks, Chief. Yeah, then that's, that's, that's what I was kind of wondering. I know there's some, I don't know how many take home cars you have, and then I don't know how many detective cars there are. Excuse me, but I was just kind of wondering on that aspect, again, is there a possible way that you can extend some of them? That's, that was my question. So if you can look at that, that'd be great. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
I do want to say, I do want to say from an employment, a legal employment issue, um you probably couldn't contract out the graffiti abatement position because that's already existence and, and there, there labor laws about that. But um Councilmember Tran and Council uh President Honda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I just want to follow up um the uh supply budget that was mentioned by um Councilmember Coach Mar earlier. Um I know that uh we don't have enough time, so I'm gonna just make it real, real uh quick and then we can discuss uh in detail uh at, at another meeting. But um what I did was I, I looked at the um supply budget for each and every department. Um and the, the, the idea behind this is that, you know, when I'm facing with the budget cut, um I would rather give up stuff than staff. So that's the behind the idea why I look at the, the, the supply instead. So um by my rough calculation, uh I look at the mayor budget, uh the council supply budget and so on and so forth. So to make a long story short, and, and again, uh my number is not a hundred percent accurate, so I need to verify the number at, at some point later. But if we do a, let's say, three percent across the board uh reduction in uh but uh supply budget, uh potentially, we could save about uh almost sixty two thousand dollars. If we do a five percent across the board cut, we could save roughly about one hundred and two thousand dollars. So that number I can work with a day and, and we can uh verify that, that number. I just want to mention that, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we'll um, I'll, I'll ask the directors to um, you know, get back to uh myself and a day in regard to what that would mean operationally uh with regard to some of these supplies. You never, I, I'm not sure what's, you know, uh what falls in that rough category and whether there would be an operational impact to supplies.
Right, I agree, Mayor, because some department uh their supply is, is to cover um, you know, copier, paper, pen and pencil, but some other department make over something more critical. So yes, I agree.
Actually, uh why don't we do this? We're, we're, let's do it while we're talking about it. A day, can you, A day, what I need you to do is reach out to each one of the directors, identify per department what is contained in the supplies section that makes up this money. And maybe you can work with Councilmember Tran to make sure we're operating on the same sheet of music. Let's then figure out what's contained in the supplies and see if that's a ripe area for some savings and, and, and all that. So let's knock that down and we'll get that to you, Council, and push that out. Okay, um Council President Honda.
Uh thank you. Does Councilmember Moore want to talk? I don't want to talk two times without everyone having a chance.
Council President, excuse me, Council uh member uh Moore.
Thank you so much, uh Council President Honda. Um you know, I um um listening to the conversation here, um I'm, I'm of the opinion that, that um there's a desire in our community to um hire someone um that's a diverse and equity um and inclusion expert um uh personnel, uh so our city uh staff. And so I, I uh would tend to support that. Um I um at this moment, I think that a contract is a good compromise. Um um I think it kind of sends out the message that we hear you. Um we're gonna walk towards it. It's not gonna be perfect, but we're gonna move towards it. Uh I'm quite confident that whoever uh which, you know, um you know, if we hire a consultant, that consultant will brief uh the new permanent employee when that time comes. Um but I think having been in this seat for seven years, um I think I've learned something about compromise and take, trying to work uh with what the public wants and for us to come up with the best solutions. So I think that is a good um idea um in terms, in terms of how we get there. Um and so uh I, obviously, I would uh tend to support the idea of adding a planner um as well. Uh so, but um you know, I'm still continuing to, to listen to these conversations and that's just kind of my two cents at, at this time. Um so I'll end it right there. Thanks, Council President Honda.
Uh yeah, thank you very much. I do want to say that I think uh Councilmember Coach Mar uh hit the nail on the head. It is my job, if the council has expressed, uh you know, essentially a plurality or, or a, a direction, even generally at this point, uh to find money, I, I, I consider it my obligation to do that. And so I'll work, you know, that's, these kinds of meetings are very helpful. So I'll work with a day in regard to some of these things and present options back to you. Uh we have four minutes left. Council President Honda.
Uh thank you. I was just going to suggest that um we prioritize the positions that were listed and any other positions that you all might want. But I'll send an email out. I, I know we need to get into executive session, so uh I'll send an email out probably tomorrow about it and and get a decision made because we do need to be making some decisions pretty soon, so thank you.
And Council President and, and many of the council members, I know you know this, but if, if make sure that whatever you do, don't hit reply all, uh that we're, and I want the public to know that any discussions that are happening are with individual council members and not a majority. We're, we're gonna make sure that we, uh and I know that, I know everybody's committed to that, but I just feel like I just need to say that. So we're gonna be able to do one-on-one or that kind of thing.
Um I put it on in all of my emails to the councils.
Exactly, exactly. They're very good. I knew you would. And I just want to make sure it's clear. Um okay, Councilmember Tran.
Sorry, Mayor, I owe you money.
Oh, okay, absolutely. Hey, hey, you know, I gotta, I gotta have a Diet Coke here. Um okay, um oh, why do I have my um, uh Councilmember Coach Mar?
Thank you. Uh thank you, Mayor. I don't owe you money, so we're good. Uh listen, um yeah, maybe we can meet uh be as soon as possible about the lobbyists so we know what we're dealing with. I really want to know what the cost would be, if it's effective or not. And I really need to get that question from somebody who knows something about it. And then, you know, the new year is coming up with this new U S Senate, new U S House and need to know, you know, really, now that it's finalizing and we need to know what we're dealing with and, and uh what our, what our chances would be to, we need to get some extra money into this city. That's my goal.
Absolutely. Okay.
So we can hire more folks.
I think that we're, we're, right now, I think we're ballparking around sixty thousand. That's what uh, you know, what our, what our cost. But we, we can reach out to the individuals that uh, I think that's right now, that's what we're kind of ballparking. Um okay, and uh right now, we are at five forty three. Let's just take a look at something real quick. Um if there's any hands up, not seeing any hands up, Council, it's very, we're gonna call an executive session here. Let me uh
Mayor, not to interrupt you, I'm sorry. We do have citizen comment letter I need to read in.
Okay, please do.
Okay.
Is that the only one?
Yep, I just have one letter to read in.
Okay, please.
Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead and time it. It says, Dear Council Members, my name is Scott Chase and I've lived in Federal Way for thirty three years. The way our extra Prop One utility tax revenue is being spent is very concerning because the stated purpose of the two thousand and six Prop One ballot measure was also to enhance the city's police officer ratio, which is also not occurring. The two thousand and six King County voter pamphlet said passing Proposition Number One would enhance police and community safety, fund eighteen additional officers and bring our ratio to one point six zero from just one point three nine officers per thousand residents. But some of the general fund support needed for that enhanced one point six oh officer ratio was removed after the Great Recession and that practice later continued and to just be spent on other things. So staffed officer levels in Federal Way have remained significantly below the enhanced one point six ratio for a decade now, even falling to just one point two eight in November two thousand and eighteen. Even with this extra Prop One utility tax still being collected to this day to fund eighteen additional officers, Federal Way's officer ratio remains below the Washington average of one point four two. A poll was recently conducted on the Federal Way Community Facebook group about Prop One. The following polling question was asked, are you okay with how our extra Prop One utility tax revenue is being spent by the mayor and city council? There were ninety three Federal Way community members who participated in the poll with an overwhelming ninety four percent of respondents saying, no, I'm not okay with how our extra Prop One utility taxes are being spent. This extra public safety utility tax was not passed by voters to be used to supplement previously existing general fund support of our police officer ratios. There are an increasing number of citizens who want the city council to use this extra enhancement tax as advertised in the voter pamphlet to enhance police and community safety, fund eighteen additional officers and bring our ratio to one point six from just one point three nine. On behalf of the voters and taxpayers of Federal Way, I respectfully ask that the city council, please work toward achieving the stated purpose of this ballot measure and actually enhance the police officer ratio with the extra Prop One revenue. Aside from any legal opinions on the subject, increasing the officer ratio to one point six zero is morally the right thing to do with extra public safety tax revenue. Promises were made to voters and those promises should be honored by our elective representatives. Thank you, Scott Chase.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chase, for your submitted, your letter. I know that he's very passionate about public safety in our community. He's actually a neighbor of mine as well. So thank you, Mr. Chase. Okay, uh with that, we are now at five forty six. Council, on the agenda that, that was emailed to you by Jennifer Marshall before this meeting, you have the link uh to join the private Zoom meeting for the executive session. Please do so right now. Um we are um uh going to go into executive session for potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty two thirty one one zero one I and collective bargaining pursuant to R C W forty two point three zero point one four zero four B. We'll be in executive session for approximately thirty minutes for that purpose. Thank you.